The Ontario School Board. First, I wanted to thank you all for showing up today. It's probably been a while since you got to see us. So have you? So it's nice to start seeing the faces back in the audience and I'm glad you're all back in school.
And they get to see our new.
And we get to see our new board members. You're no longer visitors. So we're going to rise to do the placement. Let's see, we have one change. That would be on the report section, we're going to remove English Language Learners Report and our case. Sorry, Anne Mellon, you want to say anything?
No, I'm just waiting for some district data to show some of our numbers. So I feel like at that.
Perfect.
From, from OD.
Strike, oh, take a vote to strike that from the agenda. I think a motion.
Motion to strike the English learners and a report from the other agenda.
Motion made.
Second.
Made second at all. They were saying, aye.
Aye.
I removed. On the consent agenda, minutes, personnel and bills. Did everybody get a chance to review those?
Yes.
Does anybody have any questions regarding the minutes? Personnel or bills?
I have to.
What?
Sorry.
That is telling, second time in a year.
Sorry.
Oh, that was.
Having no questions, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent items.
To consent, to approve the consent items.
Which I made, which second, all in favor, say aye. Motion has passed. Of course, recognition, we'll start with the integrated guidance with Jody. I saw her. There she is. Sorry, Jody got moved to the top.
She forgot.
Oh, that's, uh, let's do the integrated gap. You don't have that.
So I'll explain what she's getting it up, just what integrated guidance is. Integrated guidance is kind of the umbrella term that the state uses to award a certain grouping of grants to schools. The, the grants that we are awarded under integrated guidance are called the IIS early intervention, I think is the word. I have to look it up, it's going to be on my cheat sheet here. We also have high school success. We have student investment account. And as a part of some, sometime into last year, we were awarded the early literacy grant. That they went ahead and put under that umbrella. So we're required twice a year to come in front of the board to, to tell you in the beginning of the year. What we're, or maybe the end of the year, I should say, the end of the year to tell you what we're going to do for next year. And the beginning of this year to tell you how last year went essentially. So we had some goals that we set. This one is that all students who've been historically underserved will have access to college credit CTE opportunities. I'm going to paraphrase these just to save time, but we have a Latinos in Action program that we started that would, that gives them access, or I shouldn't say access, gives them exposure to college credit opportunities. We, they also do some mentoring and tutoring of kids on a weekly or five weekly basis. I can't remember, pay them weekly, but they go twice.
They go twice a week.
Twice a week. Um, we also pay for CTE certifications for many students and for college credit tuition, their tuition. I would pay, I think, forty or fifty thousand dollars last year, just in tuition for kids for college credit. So a big deal for us. And every high school student has to take at least one CTE course. Ken, do you want to speak to any of that? Did I miss anything?
Yeah, I mean, important funds for defraying the cost of kids to have that dual credit college experience while they're on our campus. No charge to students as they're engaging in either courses on our main campus, or if they want to do college choice and go to TVC, we also support whatever they can access online. We support that as well.
We also, not just TVCC, but we use Oregon Tech.
Yeah, so we have four college partners currently. We have TVCC, Oregon Tech, Eastern Oregon, and then Central Oregon Community College for culinary arts.
Okay, our second goal is increasing our graduation rate to ninety-three percent. We're not super far off from that right now, I should say, but it's also kind of weird that they have a deadline for us to report this because the data that we have to use is still embargoed, so we don't have access to it. But here are the things that we're doing around that to increase that rate. We have a pretty rigorous attendance system that's more rigorous than what the state requires and that supports our students getting to school. We started a restorative practice initiative last year. That's the year before, can't remember if it could be the year before. And restorative practice, hopefully you'll get to learn more about that later, but it's essentially the practice of teaching kids the skill of restoring relationships that they've caused damage to. That's a, that's a skill that has to be learned. We just don't naturally have it. So I got in trouble at school. I don't need to wonder what my teacher's thinking about it. We're going to talk it through and we're going to work this out. Is one example. So that's, the entire staff is learning that. We have link crew at the high school, which is basically a ninth grade intentional welcoming program that's, that's held separate and happens right before school starts to make, get ninth graders acclimated and paired up with, I think, a mentor. Yeah. We have incentive programs scattered throughout the district for certain things like attendance and behavior we're seeking that will keep them plugged into our school to increase that graduation percentage or the, the down the road, kind of, kind of investing in that. And then we have what we call community building circles, which are part of the restorative practice process. Where in classrooms, once a week, at least once a week, teachers have released that kids have been asking for more, so they've been doing it more and teachers have seen a lot of benefit from it. Where they literally kind of circle up and they talk about very surface things, but it's meant to get them talking about things that aren't academic. Where they're actually developing empathy for their, their peers and they develop a deeper relationship. And all those things are meant to, to keep them bought into kind of the school, which eventually increases their chances of graduation. The next one's attending to the mental health needs of our students. We've got lots of ways we do that. We have a really vibrant mental health approach, I think, in this district. We have a program, a social emotional learning curriculum called Wayfinder that is used. Maybe Jose, can you speak to how often they're exposed to Wayfinder students?
Once a month at the high school. We have teachers teaching SCL consistently. We started that last year.
Okay. We also again talked about restorative practices. We talked about community building circles, accountability projects and structured day are also part of restorative practices. And if a student, you know, does something they're not supposed to do and it ends up in one of the administrators offices, they have a practice they can implement with these kids, an accountability project. Which actually K-12, they sit down and they, they, they do it in various ways. I'm laughing because I always, I keep thinking of, of when, when we first started this and I walked into Aiken and Lucas was just all on top of this accountability project. He was rocking it. And there was, I don't know, Kinder, I think, I don't know, she has tiny little glasses and they have to sit down and in Kinder's case, draw out what happened. And so I walked in not knowing anything and she's drawing a picture and I said, oh, what are you drawing? So she's walking me through her picture about how she was wronged. And the secretary goes, tell her the truth. So she had to retell the story where she was actually the perpetrator and I totally believed her. So that, that happens at Kinder, all the way up to high school, or I think at high school, they actually have a template for how to kids walk through what they've done and how they can repair that harm. So pretty interesting. Structured day is, you know, when a student needs a little more accountability coming off of maybe an in-school or an out-of-school suspension, you're just not coming back and going back to class. It, it might be appropriate for them to have somebody who's kind of monitoring what they're doing between classes, monitoring what they're doing during their free time at school for a day or two. And then we have a counseling supervisor, Jose actually, and he coordinates and organizes that. These are all things we use this funding for. Excellent. So Early Lit came to us late last year and again, I said, they, they put it under this umbrella. Early Lit's really separate from everything you just said. We can kind of mesh and move monies around and those other funds I showed you, but with Early Lit, it's very, very specific on what it can be used for. Melissa, do you want to speak to that a little bit?
Ms. Christie here? She's not here. Okay. I was going to let her do it, but with the early literacy funds, it's very focused on K-three students in the earlier grades. And this last year, we were able to purchase new intervention curriculums, which we hadn't updated our intervention curriculums in quite some time because they're very, very expensive. So we really focused on updating to new evidence-based programs in K-three. And then we have a new literacy grant called a comprehensive literacy grant that we were just awarded a few weeks ago. That is actually a K-12, pre-K to 12 grant. So it will allow us to kind of spread some of what we're doing there across. And I don't know if it's going to end up in integrated guidance or not.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything. So.
We've also done a lot of professional development with our teachers around the science of reading and
Continue progress monitoring.
Yep, yep. We're doing a lot of good data keeping and have a lot of systems in place for checking the health of what the teachers and the schools are doing as well as the individual kids.
That background includes Christie as the.
Yeah, Christie Swan is overseeing all of our literacy programs right now and our instructional coaches. And she's doing an amazing job.
Didn't we get reported in May, April or May about the improvement that our kids have made?
Yeah, we're tracking their growth very, very closely. I, there's going to be some new requirements at the state level around interim assessments. And so we're hoping what we've been doing already will fit with what new requirements are. We definitely have robust systems in place. But we don't yet know if there'll be a complete match with some of the new requirements that will be coming. So I'm sure we'll be talking more about that.
What Mike was referring to is we, we were thinking that, I mean, most often when you make big changes, whether it's adopting a new curriculum or a new curriculum or making big changes, you, you often see kind of an implementation dip, if you will. And our data didn't show that at all. Actually, with every configuration of schools, it actually showed better growth since COVID, since pre-COVID.
Yeah, it was very promising. Not quite what we had hoped for in the ideal world, but not, we did not see the dip to the degree that we thought.
I talked to Christie today and she did say, say, share with them that we're pulling data kind of as we speak and it looks really exciting. So she'll share that with you down the road.
I've seen there's kind of a competition between the elementary server.
There used to be. But now we're one.
Yes.
Be honest. We like a little healthy competition.
All right. And this is just a snapshot of what we were, what our allocation was at twenty-four, twenty-five and the amount we spent. You can see we spend every penny. We didn't exactly on Early Lit, but Early Lit, as I said, is super specific, so not a lot of wiggle room to reinvent the wheel later down the road on that one, but we do spend every penny we're given.
All right. That's it for me. Any questions?
I guess I have a, I may be a comment. Is the funding still being received? I mean, are they awarding?
It's kind of a sad story. I mean, we're, we, we are, yes, the question for you is, for us is, did we get funded at the same amount as last year?
Yes, exactly. Yeah, not exactly. And we have other grants besides these as well. So we just got one slashed by fifty percent. Something, it was, uh, was for a program that we're now going to have to reimagine and it's not going to be.
A federal grant.
Yeah, so I don't, maybe you'll have more information for you, but yeah, it's, it's a little scary, it's turbulent. We'll see.
Nice stuff for the virtual schools.
Yeah. All right. So I actually left my thing back here so I can skip around for you. Josh, can you hand me that? So soon. I'm not going to read this to you because we'll talk about it later. That's what I do when people read slides. All right. So if you go to the first one, I'm not going to read this. As I said, you do have this, I believe, so you can look at it. But why do we even need a virtual learning platform in Ontario School District? And the short answer is because that's the way things are going nationwide. People want this option. And if we don't provide it, they're going to go somewhere else and get it. And we know that we can serve our kids best. So why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we go down that road? Is the short answer. Another benefit, potential benefit to a virtual school is that when you we could potentially in the near future even, if there's any kind of a teacher shortage, or we don't lose a teacher suddenly and can't replace them, especially like math or those really hard to replace subject areas. We have the connection now to provide that class virtually to the brick and mortar students. They're not missing out on learning or class sizes don't expand, that sort of thing. Which is already happening in a lot of smaller school districts. I know like Eric talks about his girls, you know, are in a small school district are able to take classes online if they, you know, you don't have a Spanish teacher, you don't have an advanced M teacher, whatever. Another advantage down the road, not immediately for us, but down the road, is that potentially our current brick and mortar students would have access to a larger course catalog for individual classes, maybe more advanced classes than we have certified teachers to teach. So it's another advantage. Okay. So there are types of virtual schools that you'll see out there and it gets really confusing for people, but it's really just three. There's a charter school, which is a completely separate school with a separate board. And that's not what we're exploring in our district right now or what we're looking for any fourth moment. Within this board, underneath this board, is the program option, which is something that the state doesn't require us to get a new ID for or anything like that. We can just start that program. And those are Ontario Tiger students. They stay Ontario Tigers, although they may be doing a one hundred percent virtual program. Or they could be doing a hybrid program, meaning I'm doing one hundred, I'm doing virtual program, but I want to come on campus and take CTE programs, or I want to come on campus and I want to take art in sixth grade, or I want to do band or choir, any of the things that we offer. I want to, I want to go on the field trips. I want to do these things. I want to stay plugged into school. I want to go to the dances. I want to go to prom and all these things. Then we have, and we're, we're calling that program Edflex Ontario. The other option that we have for virtual schools that we're taking and will be taking is we're calling Edflex Oregon. And that does require a new school ID, still under the umbrella of Ontario School District, still under the umbrella of this board. And it just requires an application to ODE because that data, testing data, attendance data, graduation data is kept separate. In the program, it actually is attached to the, to the grade level school that students in. So a student in third grade, their attendance data goes into Aiken, I started with grade level schools. Aiken's data. So a little different there. If a student came to us and wanted to enroll in our virtual school, there's, they were developing an intake process, but but really, if you're not, if you're not local here, somewhere local, what local you know, area and can't get to our school and have no interest in our sports programs, or you know, what you could take with our, our program at Flex Ontario, then we would put you in Edflex Oregon. If you're living in Salem and you want to do Edflex Oregon. The beauty of this is that you can take our virtual program and we have, we can have an arrangement with the OSAA where they still comply for the whole district. So the potential for growing these two programs is really big. It really is big. And a lot of the towns on this side of the state have taken, you know, they, they understand that and they do that. So it's going to take some time to build that, but we're excited about it. Certain questions on that part?
And right now we're exploring just the two options off the left.
Yes. Yep, not the charter. Nope.
Is there, are we looking at possibly doing both options or just one or the other?
So one, we're, we already have people enrolling for Edflex Ontario.
Okay.
So that program, we've already got people enrolled and we can take people all day long in that program. Edflex Oregon, after this board meeting, we have the minutes showing that we've reported out to you that we're going to do that. We put, we send the application into the state and they send us a new ID. And then at that point, we can start to grow Edflex Oregon. That's where the majority of our students are looking at them. But in, in virtual schools across the state, like if you look at NISSA, for example, almost all of theirs, I mean, probably ninety-five plus percent of them are from Portland, the other side of the state.
Maybe even more than ninety-five.
Probably, probably it may be like ninety-eight.
Two.
Yeah.
Interesting.
So, so the, so in, as far as this is concerned, we're going to, the majority of our students are going to be from somewhere else in the state of Oregon, not, not from out there.
So they'll be in the Edflex Oregon.
Yes, yes.
What is the benefit? Why are they choosing that? Why are we going? What, what's the difference?
I think the benefit of, of, and you're probably going to talk about this, but the benefit of having the Oregon piece and having a separate institution code for that is that we have the data. It's, it's easier to look at.
That's a great question.
I just, I mean.
But, but I think it's just, they're just looking at virtual schools and going, huh, which one should we go to? Because there's a list of them, obviously. And so when it comes to that, you know, then you're going to want to do your sales pitch. What, you know, why should you choose us versus NISSA or whatever else? And we have, we have a whole, all these ideas for like that campaign and, and pulling those students in and ideas on how we can get students to enroll that way. But I mean, that's a, that's a great question. I mean, it's also the same question is why, why do parents want to choose virtual over brick and mortar? And they all have different reasons.
I was going to ask the same question. How, why would somebody choose Ontario School District versus, you know?
I think it's really going to come down to our marketing and what we do different. We have a lot of that conversation. What are we going to do that's different? When you go on and look at, as we have done and look at other websites that are for virtual schools to see what they have to offer. We're kind of seeing a pattern of what they have to offer. I think what we need to do is, is imitate that and then go one step further. What else are we doing? And then really heavily market it. I will tell you, some virtual schools are they, they get to a point and then they're kind of stagnant with their numbers because they've kind of collected who they're going to collect, word of mouth gets through, you know, around the people who know them. And then there are some virtual schools who have kind of a pipeline from somewhere. So let's say a community college will have connection with a high school and that will be the referral point for in some conversations. You should try this. You should try that. I think that this could go a million different ways. I don't think anybody who started a virtual school really knew what to do or what, how to do it. I can tell you that we've, we've been lucky enough to have a couple of schools in the state who would share information with us, so we don't have to reinvent all the wheels. Redmond is one of them and they're using the curriculum that we've purchased for our, our online school. So that'll be super helpful, but also they talked a lot about systems and how they made sure they kept kids engaged and that kind of stuff, but but you're talking more about what makes us different. And I think that's going to be the fun part. What's going to make us different?
We have some ideas, but we don't want to say.
Yes.
I just talked to community members. Into virtual, online to see why and make them.
Yes, and actually, I was going to bring the email. Maybe we can print it off before and give you a copy. So we actually did hear from a parent very recently who is going to enroll her kids in our program and wrote a really lengthy email. And she's been, she's been tried different programs throughout and kind of talks about why she chose virtual. I think it kind of is in a nutshell, explains a lot of it where these parents are coming from and she actually was so thankful and really appreciative that we were being able to do this and getting her input and things like that. So, so I, I was going to print it out for you guys. We'll print it out and give you a copy before you leave. But I think there's all kinds of different reasons and we hear it all the time from, everything from, you know, we're on the road, or you know, we, our family wants to do this, or my student, you know, does better. There, there, we see it all. And we, we even see some of the reasons that we may disagree with that. You know, maybe they were attendance problems and we hope they'll do better in online than they did in, in regular brick and mortar, but. Well, and all of the schools that I've spoken to, a virtual program is saying that we need to be prepared for it to be highly trended. Like, I mean, they're, I mean, that's not the right.
High mobility.
High mobility. There you go. In and out, in and out, in and out, in and out. Because people try it, it doesn't work out, they go back, you know, and maybe they come back again. So.
Or they switch to a different.
Yeah. So I, I think that we just need to be prepared for that, but the fun part will be how can we grow it? So that'll take some time. If we look at these phases, I just wanted to make sure that we're clear on where we're at. We are at the very beginning, so we don't we believe in making sure we can do what we can do before we offer more. And so phase one is really about keeping students. So any student of ours in our district too is who this year we found out was not coming here. They said, we're, we're going here or there. We've reached out to, and said, we have this option. So it's about retaining those students. In phase two, we're looking at potentially, and these are just loose phases. Who knows? We might pivot midstream. I don't know. Is potentially offering those single class options to our brick and mortar students who maybe want something more diverse than what they could get in our building right now. And maybe expand those CTE offerings potentially. They do have virtual CTE, believe it or not, that end in certification. The trick there is that they have to be Oregon certified teachers who teach it through this company. And they don't currently have anybody who could do an entire CTE program that's certified for Oregon. So that doesn't mean we can't get bits and pieces of things.
Potentially using our own teachers as the teacher record.
Yeah, yeah. And then the third phase is expanding both of this program, Edflex Ontario, Edflex Oregon, big enough to where we potentially maybe need to use another space, just Cairo or something. You'll, you see virtual schools, you pass Silvies all the time, right? They have a kind of like a saddle on campus. So we, we may have something similar in that, but there's all kinds of potential around that for even local kids and the ag program they may want to be in and, but I also do virtual and that kind of thing. So just a million different things. Along the way, we also are making sure that our current brick and mortar students, when their, when needs arise, such as maybe medical or something comes up where it's like they're definitely, they, they, they could benefit from virtual. We're keeping our eye on, on that too. It's not just exclusively if you're, if you didn't come back. Any questions on that? All right. So the timeline for this, now we've started Edflex Ontario. We want a start date of September twenty-second for these kiddos that are coming in. They will not be behind. Actually, September is a very common start date for the other side of the state. We're just really early. But they will then follow our regular school calendar. And there won't be any, any learning loss there. The company has assured me that they will make sure that that first trimester is adjusted. So there's no learning lost there or, or missed there. Then we are at the same time working on that targeted marketing, marketing campaign and standing up that Ontario, Oregon school and then just ongoing marketing after that. It sounds like you're just like, you don't really, you don't have anything down. We do have it in stone. It's just so many variables. It changes all the time. But our, our, our goal remains the same, to grow the program at Flex Ontario and the school at Flex Oregon to best serve our local students and then expand to serving students throughout work. The next one, the initial startup cost is not very much. So twenty-five thousand dollars. It's Chromebooks. A minimum, we had to purchase a minimum of eight licenses. So we needed a minimum of eight Chromebooks. So our max cost was twenty-nine thousand dollars. Um, so our max cost was twenty-nine thousand dollars to start this program. Um, the number of newly enrolled students we needed was only three to pay for it and we're, we're above that. But people say, what about sports tags? Um, support programs like for homeless students, sped testing, that sort of thing. Anything we're required to do for a student who's sitting in one of our physical classrooms, we're required to do for a student who's on the virtual platform. So um, we may have, it may just look different. So we've been working with the sped department, working with, with everybody, all of the different departments um, that support students to say, what does that look like? How can we, how can we serve them? And every student so far that we've enrolled, uh, if they have been in one of these categories. We've really sat down to start to figure out, how can we do it? They're doing it across the nation, so it can be done, obviously. But every district has its own resources, its own flavor and we're figuring out how we can do it for us, so. They all will be served. Um, sports, like I said, if you're at uh, Flex, Edflex Ontario. You are an Ontario Tiger, so you can participate in our sports as long as you meet eligibility requirements, just like anybody in Brooklyn Water. And if you're at Flex Ontario, Oregon, you can. There won't be any restrictions there. That's all I have. Any questions for me?
How do you test the students? How, how, how do they, how are they really getting educated?
So the state, uh, we had Erin O'Hara Ryan's are testing. Super, super court director, coordinator. Um, she oversees testing. Um, she. Went in and researched that and we have three options. The students can do it. With on campus. They can do it virtually. Don't ask any more questions about what that might look like. I don't know. She said that that happens and she knows what she's, she knows what she's talking about. She's sure we can do it. And it can also happen um, in like a proctor situation from long distance. So. I took her, who's Erin, who's very thorough, saying we can do this, Jody, and I was like, that's all I need to hear. But the reality is, to be honest, a lot of virtual kids do opt out of testing, which is a state, the state allows that. So, they, they allow, yeah.
So, I'll, I'll follow up with that. State testing is not sizable to me, is maybe the in-program. Assessment or progress monitoring. Is there any of that with this?
That is, that is, say it again?
The, the in-progress monitoring or?
Oh, in progress. Um, I'm not, well, they have, they have tests embedded in there and they have their own progress monitoring that we, we're a lot, we watch and follow it as well. But they don't do, they don't do anything like state testing, but they're in their program, they do, yeah, they have.
So, it's something we could monitor our students' progress. Reach out to them if they.
Yeah, everything a student sees and does and every communication they have with the, with the um, the platform, the company, those teachers. And that's how we do a lot of things, um, including taking attendance, um, working with the student to help support them. Each student will have their own advisor. Uh, with the companies that will also be keeping track and helping to support. Um, there's a whole lot of safety net features. Curriculum and it's widely used in the nation, so we feel pretty comfortable with our choice there. Um, and that, and when you look at their, um, their course guide and we met with them last week to find out what the fidelity. Features, what fidelity features are built into and ensure these kids are learning, uh, we felt really comfortable with it. I'm gonna feel more comfortable with it when I'm sitting in front of it and can see it myself, like everybody else, uh, but we feel.
Is the end goal asynchronous learning or more synchronous learning where they're gonna begin with the teacher checking into their class or is it gonna be on their own?
That's really family specific.
Okay, so I'll be able to choose some of.
Right, since the school.
That's why they choose virtual, so they can have those options, you know. But they're gonna have to like attend a, like sit on a Zoom meeting for an hour, like we.
So the platform to keep it, um, to keep it as flexible as possible and it's, it's similar with all platforms. Is in their four subject areas, they'll offer one live class every day. So math Monday, Tuesday, language arts, maybe that sort of thing. The student is encouraged to attend the live class, uh, but if they don't, it's recorded. So it's, it, the idea is, is that you need to watch it in order to be successful in whatever the assignment has been. So they'll have to figure that out. Now whether that student watches that recording at eleven o'clock at night, you know, or. That's up to them, I don't know, but there's, there's not really a, a goal.
To a blended modeling some source.
Yeah, the offer of a blended model. If you go a hundred percent virtual and never wanna speak to a human being, I guess that's a possibility. Um, but kids tend to be a little more social than that and it's gonna be interesting, cause this really speaks to their, um. Their online presence, that their focus on being online and being connected electronically, things I don't, it's gonna be interesting.
Jody, doesn't the state have some requirements for um, an interaction with. A person be, in order for kids to count as attending?
Like as a mentor or.
Yeah, it can be in the email communication or. You know, a virtual Zoom meeting, check it.
They said it can't be, uh, you, that the teacher sent out a survey and the student. It, it has to be something a little more substantial than, than that and the platform tracks that interaction. So, I should be able to go on or whoever should be able to go on and see that, that Joe has had some interaction that has been recorded. Um, or, or, or noted on the platform every day. And if that's happened and Joe's been making progress and he's up to speed on his progress with the progress monitoring, the way they've set it up with their dashboard. Um, and, and a couple of other little things, that's how we actually are knowing our kids are attending, they're doing well. Attendance and not doing well is not the goal, obviously, so um, and that would be weird to attend and not do well, so. Uh, we'll see how it goes, but yes, that interaction there.
Um, who in Ontario School District is kind of working on this? I mean, I'm assuming you, but others, and then who would someone contact if they were interested in? Doing Edflex Ontario?
So a lot of people are working on it. Um, really, the whole district office in a lot of ways has had their fingers in this because we've had to. Um, to contact, um, there is a number that we have and I posted it someplace else, but I'll make sure it's on the website. Um, but you can also call the district office and they will just direct you. Um, right now, it's me, they, they come to me and I'm the one who's doing the communication. But everybody has contributed and will continue to do that for a long time.
Do you foresee the need to hire more staff?
Eventually, we will have to, yeah, that's incredible. And they did say that too, the, the schools we connect to has said, you know, you'll get to a point where. You can't absorb it as we're doing now. It'll have to be somebody because just the, just the transfer paperwork alone in now, in and out, in and out is. A job. Uh, attendance is a job. This, one of the schools I'm speaking with, um. They have about three hundred and fifty kids in their program and they had to hire somebody just to do attendance and paperwork, so. They, they did say expect the load, but we're not there yet, so.
Will look drastically different from a brick and mortar, obviously. Have all that overhead, so, um, but what we do anticipate once we get to a certain level. Needing a few people on board to help.
Those students have access to all of our clubs. We have more, I learned more on our tour that I didn't realize.
If you're in Edflex Ontario, you have access to everything in Ontario.
Choir and band.
Everything. We have a student who's enrolled in Edflex Ontario right now. Um, at the middle school level and although we haven't even started our classes yet, which will be the only year we start this late, this, we just started, but. Um, those classes haven't even started yet and she's already coming to campus for two periods a day for classes she wants. And that's at the middle school level. This is K twelve, so. You know, you can see, you can see kindergarten, we've got parents who have kinders, so they want to do virtual for that one reason or another and, um. They can still have opportunity to keep their kids plugged into what we're doing at school. And a lot of times, virtual kids will, will drift back into brick and mortar for the socialization and I think that's, it's a good bridge for that. We're setting them up for that and that's what they choose to do.
And, and there's differences. There's some that don't want that, they just wanna be completely virtual and there's some that. Want that integration a little bit. Uh, partial days and, and, you know, and I, I'm gonna send you this email again and. We'll see kind of what one parent's thinking in terms of that. Why she does it for her kids. We get the slideshow, it's not in.
Oh yeah, we can absolutely send it to you.
You got this last time. Yeah, but I didn't give him. Yes, I did give you.
Like animals here on paper.
Any other questions for Jody? Thank you, Jody.
It's double sided, I'm gonna get it. Alrighty, so.
I'm gonna just introduce, so. We are doing the communication presentation with parents.
Alrighty, so at the beginning of the year. Communication snapshot, uh. And realigning our goals and bringing forward some, some new information and a little bit more about what I do in my department. And giving away good, pretty papers to take. So first I'll start, um, with our district profile, which is the front and back page. Um, I've been doing these probably every three to five years. I'll put together. A snapshot of what the district's about, some demographic information, um, our commitments. Within this packet too, there's a building directory, so you have our fresh admin. There's a, a district's office directory. Um, trying to highlight some achievements and celebrations. Um, one thing to note is that this is still kind of a working document. My plan, um, is to send it out in our August newsletter to parents and staff as well as embedded on our website, so. You'll see where there are some holes, um, in information, but we'll fill those as we get more. Good stuff to share out, but that goes out at the end of August, just so you know as well. So the last profile that I built was, um, right after COVID or. Yeah, right, as we were coming out of COVID in the twenty twenty twenty-one era. So we kind of like to refresh these as. That frequently, but not too frequently, because a lot of things within a school district do stay pretty stagnant. Um, but we felt that after the reconfiguration, as of after COVID, there were so many changes and celebrations that. This was something that we could publish at the beginning of the year. And as you walk through that, one more thing I wanted to note. Now to the communication profile, this is kind of where I dig into what I do. I just wanted to highlight that first piece for you all, so you knew, um, that that was coming out. If anybody has questions. I'll have that, like I said, on the website. That's kind of a cool landing page to point people to. Um, previously, we had that, we shared, um, at different community spots, so maybe we'll print copies again and go deliver those too. Just some quick facts. This started out as a two pager and now has evolved to a six pager, so. Pretty good, like that, we've got a lot of cool stuff going on that, that we wanna highlight, but. Um, onto the comms profile here, um, similar to the district profile. It's just good to realign your commitments and I know for me, it's a big accountability piece because I kind of sit in the back and. Float along with the district initiatives, but really what we wanna do is align these commitments to what the district wants to, uh, promote. And for this profile, um, our commitment really is on clarity, transparency. Accessibility, collaboration and consistency. Sorry, you guys can't see that, that's really small, but, um. Really, what it boils down to is making sure that the information that we share is really clear, concise. So that it's not a mixed message. Um, I know when I was learning this position. I have a tendency to be more verbose and I like to explain and a lot of times. Things can be lost in the explanation, so really simplifying and being clear in, in what the district initiatives are and. You know, how we go about daily. Procedures. So, one of these things to really, I think, highlight is with these commitments. All of these little pieces being really mindfully woven into all the communications that we do. Do help build trust and build those relationships with families and I do think, you know, that's not just myself, it's with our picks. And with our teachers when they're communicating with their families and, and even with each other, it's really a network of relationships that. Do see that and that does take time, like those relationships start internal and then build out and. I think as a district, we, we try to just share those and really positively promote that and. I have a kind of renewed commitment to that this year to just. Overshare. We've got so much good stuff going and just need to share it with our community. Okay, so our main communication tool with all stakeholders is our district website. It's just an easy landing point. Um, what I do monthly is monitor our engagement and analytics. So for my very left brain, this is so not. What I like to do, but it is so informative in, in the type of posts that we do post and, and when we're posting, what we do share. What time our newsletter, um, goes out, what time we're sharing our calendar reminders, so. To know the backend of that kind of explains why we send things when we do, because I'm looking at the engagement and monitoring. When our click rates are the highest or, oh wow, if I send them at six P M, nobody opens it because it's at dinnertime and people have forgotten. You know, so we do try to boil down the best times of delivery, best meth, best methods. Um, and then another piece to, uh, communicating is that we try to hit every communication channel. So as this, I, I don't think you can see, I hear a lot of times, well, I don't have Facebook, so I didn't know what happened. Well, there's fourteen thousand people that are accessing this or fourteen thousand views of that information, so. It's not our only resource, that's not the only place we share information, but it is such a huge tool for parents to be able to visit that. Whether or not they know how to access our, uh, information anywhere else. And it's an easy place to point parents to. And then, um, kind of on that monitoring piece, I'll go through, um, like on our website, all the posts that we post, so. Uh, like for this example, our school board members, you guys garnered a ton of attention, so clearly. He wants to know. So I can see in the future, more boards being shared on our website. Or on Facebook as well, not just on our website, so, um, and that stuff has inflows. There are times when board information is super high and people wanna know, like now, and then there are times where people. Not to hurt feelings, care less about what goes on with the school board and more about like the end of the year or, you know, the fun things happening, so. Just to know there's someone on the backend monitoring and trying to kind of play that game. While also sharing our information, so. Like this post wasn't super popular, but it's just one of our calendar reminders and I try to hit. Parent Square, Facebook and our website, so that they're all, all that information is laid out. And wherever parents wanna find it. Another communication tool is Catapult EMS. Um, you guys likely won't ever hear of that, that's because it's our. Internal staff emergency management, um, communication tool. So we've kind of trained our staff that if they ever see a Catapult EMS alert come through. They know that there's a catastrophic event or an, uh. A situation that will require some type of action, be it a evacuation. Uh, you know, maybe a gas leak, something, something that would cause them to disrupt their instructional day. And thankfully, we don't have to use it very often, but we try to do a refresher once a year, just to remind staff that that's what that platform is. And then last, I just wanted to put Parent Square in front of you. I'm sure you've seen emails if you, or texts if you have kids in the, the district. Um, little back, um, story on parent squares that we didn't really choose to move to Parent Square. Parent Square Purchase Remind. And then we then had to adopt Parent Square and, and roll that in and we were kind of given two transition. Timelines, we were either able to transition at the beginning of the year or kind of forced to transition in the spring. So instead of having to switch mid-year, we chose to roll out the new platform at the beginning of the year. And hopefully, this is the last platform we have to learn for a while. Um, we really wanna get parents, community and staff used to using this system and so far, I think it. People really like it, it's been easy to adopt and, and clean, everything funnels into one feed, kind of like a, a Facebook feed, so. Um, another way to share out information and then I'm also looking at, you know, click rates and delivery times. Because it's like each modality has a different preferred time of delivery. Preferred time of delivery, so trying to strike the balance there of. You know, the hierarchy of communication, but new platform. But so far, very good implementation, we have ninety-five percent of the district staff and students. Rolled in, so when we, when we went to Remind, there was a big gap on our data upload. So we started the year trying to catch people up where now we have almost all of our district up and running, receiving notifications, so. That was just the quick and dirty, if you have any questions, let me know.
If I could, so Parent Square is new this year, as I built with a student. Then if I could, on Catapult, didn't we have an actual situation about ten months ago that worked? We did really well, we had to evacuate the high school.
And thankfully with Catapult, I was in the process of, this has happened a couple of times now, where I'm in the process of writing the Catapult message to deploy. And the situation has resolved, or it's de-escalated, so. Good and bad, it is a quick platform to send those, those quick notifications out. But sometimes, in the nature of these types of situations, they resolve themselves or are de-escalated before we even really have to notify parents. Of those situations, and then we can notify in our other procedural ways.
Look at the benefits, uh, to, of going to Parent Square, I mean, we have seen benefits from, from Remind to Parent Square is that. Before, if a parent was having challenges getting messages. You know, they'd have to call and then Karen would have to kind of walk them through and, and it was really challenging, and now she can. Do it for them.
I can manipulate their notification settings. For them, so instead of having to walk a parent through how to change to receive texts, I can just go in and, and do that for them.
So, and if you, like when we send these out, so we were talking about equity earlier, and one of the things about. This is that when we send a message out, it. When a parent says this is my preferred language, it automatically translates that into their preferred language. When it's sent, so that's a really nice feature, since obviously we saw we have a lot of languages spoken here in the district.
Missed that period, are you able to update the language that they prefer?
Yep.
Okay, on the backend, okay. So what, everything that's pulled from Parent Square comes from Synergy or our student information system. And we're still feeling out some of the quirks of the implementation wheel. We had an instance the other day where the high school was translating back and forth, but it wasn't, because it wasn't pulling into Parent Square. So once we were able to identify that, we could go troubleshoot on the backend and, and work it out, but. Yeah, seems to work really well and capability of importing school calendar from Parent Square into your own device, so. An event or. District event or school event.
We have fifteen languages.
That's what's reported to the state.
Information, but also we have to, in the classroom, we have to be.
And I would say that we, those aren't predominant, but they may be dialects of.
Specifically, or a home language spoken in school, but they might be one student. Except.
Any other questions for Karen? Moving on, board bits. You, did we be talking about this?
I didn't, but so at every month, we, we added this several years ago, just to. To give the board members an opportunity to go around and say, oh, you know, like. For example, I know some of you went on a tour of the high school, so you might talk about tonight. You know, hey, this is what I saw, or might talk about the search for tradie, or if you went. To something specific of the high school, or things that you might have engaged with. You know, in the month's time that you. Or anything else you want to share.
And then typically, I'll just ask for a first volunteer.
My first comment is, this is a copy, because I, I like paper, I have. On November third, twenty eleven, I was appointed to the school. So I've been here since November twenty eleven. And principal gave me a ten-year pin, so I took a couple of. How long was I off? A year or? I had kind of a break. Uh, second, I was amazed at the tour of the high school, so. I had no idea, I mean, I've been in it, but it was, I enjoyed seeing everything. And I appreciate you waiting half an hour for me to get there. I was in the building, but I was back talking to the people to. Music teacher. No, I was, I was just amazed at, at the, being able to talk to the teachers, to know what they do. I was impressed, we have so many, and I wasn't there though, to, in the band, we have. We used to have Peter and I, and now we have twenty or something.
There's like thirty-nine, right? Forty, forty-five.
Didn't probably do this, I was not up at midnight, twelve or one AM.
I was soundly sleeping, but my head rolled back.
Yeah, and that's, oh, no, my last thing, I actually was, I'm trying to walk more, and I go out. I live near Alameda School, and I go, oh, I'll walk down that, when I walked around the track. I asked principal and I used some of the exercise equipment. Now, I, I have to leave by seven forty-five if I get up that early. But I could go back at what time?
Four fifteen.
Four fifteen.
And if you're there between school hours, you're gonna be facing me or Mr. Tacman. Better hope it's Mr. Tacman, just saying. We're very protective.
Anything else, Mike?
No.
And thanks, Volta.
Yeah, I was very appreciative to the administrators that gave us the tour of the high school the other day, it was. Very informative, I mean, it's been twenty-five years since I went to school there, a lot has changed, there's some things that. Changed as much, but it was super, it was great to meet the teachers and, you know, see the libraries, see the choir room. Go see all the CTE stuff, but obviously we wasn't there when I was there. So huge thank you to you guys for inviting us and giving us a tour. And this is kind of a mom thing, but back to school was amazing this year, it was. I have one that went to the middle school this year, and one that transitioned up to Alameda, and it was. It was great, it was seamless, it was, so kudos to everybody who made that.
Yes, I will agree, thank you very much for the tour, high school admin, we kind of got popcorned around to all of them, and they all did a great job and. Really showed off some of the great features. It was really fun to see all the CTE programs and to hear about the dual credits, because that's something that's really important to me, so to hear that those are paid for and how many students are taking advantage of those is really incredible. Mr. Mink, Cardinal and Corn seemed to go off without a hitch on Saturday, and actually, the most. The comment I heard the most was how phenomenal the band was. Large in numbers, they sounded great, I couldn't hear anything Mr. Mink was saying over the loudspeaker, because they were so fantastic. And yeah, like Lee said, as a parent, open houses were great, this is my first child to go to Alameda, so it's like a little bit scary, but everyone was super welcoming. And minus the crazy librarian, but everybody else. Middle school, my daughter's playing volleyball, and Mr. Martinez has been super on top of it with schedules and parent communication, so. It's been a great start to our school year, and thank you everyone for being so welcoming to us, newbies. I did not attend the high school, I was doing some other volunteer work, I don't really know what I was doing, something like that though. But yeah, I will also follow these two ladies as a mom, it was awesome, open houses were great. Felt very welcoming and opening, and you could definitely felt like the nerves fell off from last year, like you could feel the chaos and the nerves fall off, and then she was just much smoother. You could just feel the presence of that smoothness, and then my kids have had great years already, so that's been fabulous. Just sports going on and some of those things, so. Yeah, it's been an awesome year already. Awesome, what, three weeks or two weeks, three weeks and two weeks? A week? Two weeks, six months. Feels about the same.
Thank you guys for giving your input. I've been out, out most of July and most of August, but I did have an opportunity to go for a walk this morning. And I walked past Aiken, and my wife always says, oh, they're in school, let's go a different route, but it was the greatest day. For me, maybe not for her, because I walked by and these kids were going in, and there was like. Adults in every corner of the world, and I was thinking, how amazing, and I got to see Aiken, and I'm sure that's the same case for all the schools. But the visibility of adults was incredible, and if I was a parent, dropping off my kid, I'd know. I've got a good bunch of staff standing at the front, as well as probably on the inside.
They all have their vests on.
They all had vests on it.
We know you, Ann.
Anyway, to coordinate that, I know is a lot of work, and people in the right place at the right time is always a plus, and I appreciate all the work that you've done. Not just at Aiken, because I'm sure that happened elsewhere, and I'm sorry I didn't make it down to the other schools, we turned and moved, so. Moved on, but again, thank you guys for all that you do to start these school years out, I do remember them. Uh, next, on our agenda is the finance report.
Yeah, right now, we're right in the middle of open enrollment, and so all employees are required to go in and choose their benefit plans and. And so Christina, who does payroll, Blanca, who's in HR, and myself, or a mixture of the three of us, have been to every school and. And talking to staff and, and helping them through that, and. And I really enjoy that, because I like to interact with the staff and, and help them with their plans and just kind of get to know. I know all their names from payroll, because I can see their names, and I know, you know, what school they're at and what their position is, but I'm not good at faces, because I don't have that interaction. So I do enjoy going out to the schools and, and putting a face as a name. Last year, I, I talked about benefits and, and all the introductions and all the options there are at the district. And I had, I did a quiz in one of the, one of the classes, and I said, what's, what's your first name? They tell me their first name, so I can say what their last name was and their position, and I was about eighty percent so. Anyway, so I, I've enjoyed doing that. And then this month, there's a few large expenses, because it's beginning of the year, so we're paying for. Like insurance for the whole year, and, and, and then a few things wrapping up from last year, you know, with. Always like the, the Aiken drawings and trying to, you know, make those payments and wrap that up, and. Anyway, so you'll see a lot of one-time big payments this month, but typically, it's, it's pretty straightforward with. You know, salaries are pretty even throughout the, throughout the months and, and expenditures. July and August are no, well, for, for the cash out or for the payrolls, a little lower, because we've already. Paid all of the teachers and, and everyone from, in, back in June for July and August, but starting in September, we'll be pretty consistent. So cash flows. In July, we received a double payment for state school fund, because in June, we did not receive a payment, and so. There's a little bit of a spike in cash flows because of that, but then it'll be pretty steady going forward, that we get. Probably taxes and. Anyway, that's, that's all I have.
Excellent, anybody have questions for Devon?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment, I, I was reading this and showing my wife, and I, we're just amazed that every invoice is listed. Like Ace, you have three pages or something, thirty-dollar ninety-five, I mean, every, they aren't lumped together. That's nice, but I know what you're doing.
We will move on to superintendent.
Hey, well, so those of you that are new, you get a report for me, from me. In your board packet every month. I try to hit, you know, some highlights of things that are, that are happening. And, and then I normally don't go through all of them at this meeting, but, but I, I did want to just hit on a couple of things, so you, you talk. The transportation rules, you know, unfortunately, we can't transport every single student. And the other thing we can't do is we can't stop at every single house, our kids would be riding the bus for four hours. So, so I just, I explained that, you know, and I, I hate that some parents get upset that we can't, like, why do I, my, does my kid have to walk two blocks to catch? The bus, because that's a designated bus stop. Or, you know, they don't want their student to have to walk to school when they're, you know, if they're freshmen, and, you know, they don't. Like that, I, I understand that, so we try to explain that, so I wanted to make sure that you all had. The transportation rules that we have to follow, so if you're ever approached, you can, you know, also help to explain that or point in our direction and, and will. Will do our best to, to get them to understand why we do it the way we do. And one thing in here that I put was, I talked about our, so the governor has a new executive order that bans cell phones, bell to bell. And so, obviously, that's not, I know there's been a lot of superintendents across the state and districts that are really concerned about that. Wasn't a big stretch for us, we'd already kind of invented that in our schools, and so we just kind of tightened it up a little bit, we actually, the principals all got together. A few weeks ago. And came to some common language, because we want it, you know, from school to school, we will all want to be on the same page, so. Our, our kind of slogan, if you will, is off and away all day, and. And then I included in there what the order was, and then I also included our little one-pager that parent created and sent out to families. Forming them of, of the, the changes where that's concerned, and, and quite honestly. Really, it's kind of a relief for us, because it's such a distraction at school, and people say. What if my kid needs to get a hold of me? We still have phones, the same thing we did when you were kids, right, like we, you. Shut the phone and you called home, right, that's, that's something we do, we have phones in every classrooms, every classroom, so we're, we're good. And then the last thing is, I put in here, I talked about the upcoming economic revenue forecast, which is due to come out. Any minute. And, and those, those come out, gosh, I think something like eight times a year or something. Just to let you know, and I'm going to keep you guys updated all the time, that, that we anticipate that not being a good. A good forecast. So, but at the same time. We anticipate it not being good, and, you know, we don't want people to panic, because there's going to be eight more of, of those revenue forecasts, but also. The one thing that the state, although the state's unemployment rate has increased, and some of those jobs are higher-paying jobs. The state does have a cash reserve of three billion dollars, so the hope is that if, if there are. Go in, in the wrong direction and there are cuts, that that fund could be used to make us whole. At the same time, we are all, we always have that in, in front of us, we're always thinking about. That Plan B, Plan C, Plan D, and so I just want you all to know that. You know, we're already kind of thinking through that, if things go south and we are. You know, been here, and all of a sudden, they tell us, you're not going to get all, you're not going to get this money or this money or this money, then. We'll, we'll have a backup plan on how we're going to manage that, what we're going to do, so. But we're not panicking yet, but we definitely, so tomorrow's our. Leadership meeting, we have it every, a couple Tuesdays of the month, so now that principals are here, they're going to hear. Tonight, but we're going to hear it from you tomorrow, which is what I've been saying for probably the last year, which is. That we are not going to be frivolous, we are, we're, we're tightening our belt straps, just like we did last year. And we're only buying what we have to buy, we're not traveling, we don't have to. We're, we're paying attention to hiring, and so we don't just automatically, we're not going to automatically just re-post a position if it comes open. We're going to talk it through, do we really need it, those kinds of things, and that just, you know, staying in front. And that just, um, you know, staying in front of it and being proactive is, is uh important. And I think as Devon explained to you, um, in your board training, that we are still really healthy as a district. We have a healthy reserve, um, and we are in much better shape than most places. Across the state nation, but we're that, we are that way because we're proactive. So, um, I will try to keep you guys updated on what comes out and, and by the next meeting, I'll have. Details of what that forecast looks like. And, um, the thing we start actual moves and we start making.
So could I comment? When you say that things aren't good, you mean, to me it means two things, the, the revenue is less, but it is also meaning that maybe it's not accurate.
Well, could be. Um, I, so one of the things that kind of goes along with this is, you know, they're, they're going into a special legislative session. Here, uh. Twenty-nine, I believe it is, uh, because they're trying to get a transportation package. So, um, they'll, the governor's calling for that special session and, um. They're gonna try to go in and. Convene and, and do all of that and see what happens. That kind of has to happen first before we know what's gonna happen. Uh, down the road, but, um, but even with our grants, like our integrated guidance grants. Things like that, those are, a lot of those are state grants. So for example, um, our student success act. Money, we, we pay for a lot of things. That is, that money comes off of the growth proceeds tax and that, uh, that was down. The collection of that was down. So obviously there's cuts to that. And, um, we have kind of built into that, and there are some things that we could probably do without. We had to, so we'll just.
Do, do we have outline contingencies on if our bu- if our budget doesn't meet? Like, do you already have them kind of outlined? Or is it like we go to Plan B when we're forced to?
Um, that's kind of a hard question to ask because it kind of is dependent on what funding, what the funding is, right? And, um, you know, for example, um, if we had planned in there. So, uh, was it last year or the year before, we bought a, but you banned you, new band uniforms, super expensive, right? Those are a high-priced item. If that was something that was in the budget right now. And we were going into that, that's probably something we would cut, right? Because that's something that we can't do without for another year. So if we look at those kinds of things, those are things that we would cut. If it's a, a employee who already, that's already employed with us. We would probably look to see if there's something else that we could, we could cut. So it depends on. That's a hard thing to answer, but there's constantly things going on. I know Devon and I are constantly thinking about. Okay, if we need to do this, we can move this here. You can move this into this grant or this here, or move this back into the general fund or whatever that is. We, we're always thinking about moves that we can make to. I, do anything if you wanna add to that.
The company instead of literacy and so we, we say, okay, well, what can we use this, this funding for? And, and we, we just, um, adjusted it, so.
So with new grants, you can be like the old bucketed funds, maybe be reallocated.
Yeah, possibly.
For that.
That S words.
Yeah, if it allows.
If it's allowable.
If it's allowed.
Yeah, if it's within guidelines. Absolutely. And we're already, if this is a new grant that they want people to do and we say, gosh, where are we? We've been doing it for five years. And they say, you can use that money, then, then heck, yeah, we're gonna supplant into that, we're doing it. So we'll take advantage of every opportunity that we can. Any questions for me? Anything you would like to see, um, don't hesitate to, to contact me like. If you, you know, hey, could you talk more about something that, you know, we've been confused by or, or just reach out to me. Send me an email, give me a call.
My understanding you would like us to come visit you once a week.
If not, all of us are retired.
All right, uh, we're gonna move on to our next section, which is public comment. If we have anybody on the list. Nobody on the list, we will move on to the business section. First item on there is the, to appoint a board chair and vice chair.
Motion to appoint, uh, Brett Upmore as our chair.
I see a railroad coming.
Do you remember last year? I don't even think I finished the sentence. Thank you, that's a compliment. So, moved in, seconded. All in favor, say aye. Motion is passed for chair. We need a.
I have a motion to appoint Abby Apadaka as vice chair.
Motion made. Made it seconded, all in favor, say aye. Motion is passed, vice chair.
Thanks, guys. So welcome.
All right.
Mr. Black, you gave such gusto that you have four years. I just really didn't think you'd wanna be the vice either.
So the business items, typically we would, we can go through and do them individually. There'll be some opportunities to combine them. Uh, throughout this process, but uh today, I think we'll go slow and there's enough to combine. First one on there is the approval of the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six OHS activities handbook. I would need a motion, excuse me, has everybody had an opportunity to review that?
Yes, yes.
And no questions or I, I believe that probably is Mr. Mink. Would be able to answer those for us.
I think my question is like, will this, uh, will we adjust this as like the online things start? Like, I was looking at the attendance policy, I guess, just is that something that would be addressed in the future as far as that goes?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to obviously, if adding that component because, um, for example, with attendance. We'll utilize the attendance requirements that the online teams. Stay aboard and, and then obviously if we think that we need to have any extra adding to that, we'd wanna consult with. With Josh and, and make sure that we're following OSAA.
I could, and we'll say with the online component being ours, it'll be a lot easier for me and the coach to access those weekly grades. And weekly attendance they give to those coaches, whereas if they're at a different online entity. We're just checking at the end of every season or the beginning of each season and not necessarily able to monitor them. Week to week like we do with our brick and mortar kids. So that'll be a lot easier for our coaches as well to have that access.
Um, and then, uh, the addition of athletes only participating in one sport per season, is that like a new OSAA policy? Is that district specific?
That would be, that's ours and that's just the last few years. It's been really hard to monitor. It's been, uh. It's created a lot of issues amongst teams and coaches. And to eliminate that, just because athletes aren't doing what they need to do as far as the time management piece. Uh, they're kind of telling coach one thing and then they're going to do another thing without really communicating with those coaches or parents. Uh, in my six years here, I've only seen two athletes do it successfully. And they were very type A athletes, uh, they were able to manage their time well and we're just not seeing it. So. That was, that was the recommendation.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we, I would entertain a motion to approve the OHS athletic activities handbook.
Motion to approve the OHS athletics.
Motion made. Can I have a second?
I'll say.
Motion made in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, name. Motion has passed. Russian, resolution twenty-five dash oh one, designating a CAO.
Make a motion to ex- approve resolution twenty-five dash oh one. Appointing the chief administrative officer.
Motion, uh. Motion made, do I hear a second? She made second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, resolution twenty-five dash oh two, I have a motion to approve the deputy officer.
I motion to approve the resolution twenty-five dash zero two.
Motion made. Motion made second, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, name. Motion has passed. The next one on there is the oh three resolution.
And all second.
Uh, second, thank you. And motion made in seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is passed. We are actually into a spot.
So do you wanna just go and.
So I think we can get down to about, uh, twenty-five thirteen, I don't know, twenty-five fourteen. So if somebody would like to make a motion for twenty-five oh four to twenty-five.
Do you know, so the last one we did, what on twenty-five zero four, do we need to put that that's updated in the, okay, yes. The one resolution twenty-five zero four, is that the one?
The date is wrong. Should say twenty-six. Twenty-two.
You just make, make an amendment. The amendment, yeah.
So, if you're okay with combining all those, we would have a motion for those resolutions, oh, four to oh. Or fourteen.
I'll motion to do resolution twenty-five oh four, all the way through resolution twenty-five four. With, no, we have to do that after, right?
No.
With the adjustment on resolution twenty-five zero eight for the repayment to be made before June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Motion made second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is passed. Again, we go back to the board policies. We can lump them all together and prove them all here with, if there's no objection to that. No, hearing no objection, I would take a motion to approve board policies seventeen through twenty.
I motion to approve board policy seventeen through twenty.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
All second.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is passed, oops, sorry, any names? Hearing none, motion is passed. Topics for future board meetings. Start, one of the first things is the OSBA meeting in Portland is, we all, we all had a email. If you have made a decision already or not made a decision, some of we would, could have more conversations about in the future meeting if you'd like.
When does a decision?
Registration opens the second of September.
Okay.
It'll, it'll, it'll be open until the. I don't, I don't know. They tell me when it opens in the second, I can tell you that.
Okay.
And then you could probably make. Just get rooms reserved and then cancel later on.
Cause right now I have.
So she could make her, she could go ahead and get.
Plan ahead and then.
If I could, I would, that's a really worthwhile time to be there. One of the people that I met is now the president of Senate, uh, board chair from Lake Oswego. But you meet quite a few different people and learn as much from talking to people as from the classes.
And, and if there are questions that come up, that might be something. Have a discussion session or maybe a work session. And get here too early or start too early and have lots of work sessions. Discuss that. The other thing on my, uh, future board, actually it's not a future meetings. I just wanted to say. Fire to, to end of July, um, this board was four people. And it's amazing what a fifth person adds to this discussion. I appreciate all of you taking the willingness to come in here and be part of the, the board. Cause it does fill us up.
Yeah.
I feel completely now.
To me, fills up the time.
Oh, actually, we're, we're, we're good, so, thank you.
Chair like you.
Then, is there any other future board meeting items splitting the line?
Me, nothing that's out of the ordinary. We're obviously gonna move, and Annabelle's presentation to September. That she was supposed to do this month, hopefully ODV will have the data to her by then. And, um, that'll be the next agenda as a report. And then, as I said before, we do try to under reports and, and recognition. So next month we'll start a recognition of students, um, and which you all have been here for those and that's a blast always. Um, but we also try to do a report, kinda like we did tonight about like maybe a program that's happening in the district. And so, um, we'll, you know, like, we've done like our pad program. Um, Val even did that, was it last spring? I think it was, but, um, we try to do. For you. So if there's something specific, we usually kinda try to, we, we talk about like. God, let's put this one in front of them, but if there's something specific that you guys would like to see, let me know and we'll move that.
All right, um, any other things that can be on the agenda? If not, or hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion made seconded, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, name.